All right, let's call to order this regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for June 4th, 2019. Invite you to stand if you choose. I'll offer the invocation and pledge allegiance if you join me. Father, thank you for another wonderful day in our community, and we thank you for the beautiful weather that we have. We pray that you'll give us wisdom and guidance as we conduct the fairs of the city tonight, and we pray that you'll continue to watch over this community and those who protect it. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown, who is absent. Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here.
We have comments tonight, right?
We have a need for a closed session, Mayor. Ashley will cite the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 61-8101(c) for discussions of pending litigation against the city.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And I skipped the words and recognitions. I didn't mean to do that. So if you'll give me just a minute, we'll have a little bit of a anniversary to celebrate tonight. Sometimes in the life of the community, things happen, and on, if you'll look at that... Congratulations to the most trusted man in Bowling Green.
Yeah.
To the man who served...
(laughing)
If you'll look, there's a picture that was circulating around for Joe, say, a couple months or two ago. We'll go ahead and let it run. Congratulations to the most trusted man in Bowling Green, to the man who's served as a police officer on the Bowling Green Independent School Board, and now in the City of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. For 50 years, we've had the pleasure of knowing Joe Denning and what he means to our community. Thanks, Joe. We love you.
Joe, it has been such a pleasure getting to know you over the last 12 years. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you and everything you've done. Happy anniversary.
Great leaders don't set out to be great leaders. They set out to make a difference. Thank you for your service and making a difference in our community.
Congratulations to you on this very important and positive part of Bowling Green's history. It is my privilege to know you and to have worked with you.
Hi, Joe. I just wanted to say, congratulations, and I love you, and I have really enjoyed working with you for the past 15 years, even though you're always trying to get rid of me. I hope you have a great day, and congratulations. Bye.
Hey, Joe. Congratulations on 50 years of service for the City of Bowling Green. It's been a pleasure working with you in the last few years, and I look forward to many more.
Congratulations, Joe, and thanks for being such a great role model.
Hi, Joe. Congratulations, and thanks so much for all your service and for working with me on the Audit Committee.
Hey, Joe. Congratulations on 50 years. You've meant a lot to the city. You've meant a lot to me. I appreciate your friendship for 20-plus years, and I really appreciate, and I think the city is better off for what you've done. So thanks so much, Joe. Enjoy and congratulations.
Congratulations, Commissioner Denning. It is phenomenal, all that you have done in your lifetime, and all that you have done for the citizens of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the citizens specifically of Bowling Green, Kentucky. It has been my honor to serve alongside of you, and on this very important anniversary, it is my pleasure to wish you the best and tell you just how proud I am for you.
Congratulations, Joe. It has been such an honor and a privilege to get to serve with you and to hear your stories of what you have overcome and what you have accomplished in the last 50 years. So thank you for letting me be a part of all the things that you've done for our city.
Congratulations, Joe. What an accomplishment. 50 years since being sworn in as the first African-American Bowling Green Police Department police officer. What an astonishing and amazing thing, and I can only imagine how many of our current and past officers have been inspired by your leadership and your willingness to dig in and serve your community over the last 50 years. It's a true inspiration for me to work with you, and I appreciate your mentorship. Here's to another 50, Joe.
Congratulations, Joe, on 50 years of public service. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Joe, I've had the great fortune of working with you my entire career, which is almost 30 years now. You've really made a difference in our community. Appreciate your support for law enforcement. Look forward to many more years to come.
Hey, Joe. Congratulations on your 50-year anniversary. And I just wanted to say, you know, somebody who's probably close to your age, I grew up in Montgomery, Alabama, as you may know and saw and witnessed and heard a lot of things in my younger days that's pretty embarrassing to look back on. So thanks and congratulations on being a pioneer and paving the path for others. And I want to say, too, I've been here 12 years now, and you've asked some tough questions, but you've always been fair, and I really do appreciate your support. Hope you have a lot more years of service left in you, and congratulations again. Thanks, Joe.
Hello, this is Robbie from the Payroll Department, and I just wanted to say, congratulations, Commissioner Denning, on your anniversary, and thank you for all that you've meant to the citizens of Bowling Green and Warren County.
Hey, Joe. Just want to tell you that I'm really excited to be a part of the celebration of your 50-year milestone as being the first black city police officer, and this just, this recognizes 50 years of you being a public servant with the police, and the state police, and the city school board, and the Board of Commissioners. And I just consider you a true friend, and it's been an honor working with you, working alongside with you, and very proud of all the work that you've done, and you are a true public servant.
When you look at that photograph there, you see that it's dated June 4th, 1969. That was the day that Joe Denning was sworn in as the first African-American police officer. So if you'll allow me the privilege of reading this proclamation, we're going to touch on a couple of dates here, Joe. Whereas Joe Denning began his service to the City of Bowling Green by being sworn as the first, as a police officer on June 4th, 1969, serving through March 7th, 1970, as the city's first African-American police officer. And whereas Joe Denning continued his service to the City of Bowling Green and then other communities, becoming the second African-American trooper with the Kentucky State Police on March 9th, 1970, serving through the summer 1972. And whereas Joe Denning continued his service to the City of Bowling Green and other communities, becoming an original member of the United States Government's Model City Agencies in 1972, serving through 1975. And whereas Joe Denning continued his service to the City of Bowling Green by becoming the first African-American member of the Bowling Green Independent School Board on January 1st, 1975, serving through December 31st, 1991. And whereas Joe Denning continued his service to the City of Bowling Green by becoming the first African-American member of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners on January 1st, 1992, serving through December 31st, 2004, and returning January 1st, 2007, I didn't put in here with me, but that's when we came on, through February 15th, 2011. And whereas Joe Denning continued his service to the City of Bowling Green by being appointed as the first African-American mayor of the City of Bowling Green on February 15th, 2011, serving through November of that year. And whereas Joe Denning continued his service to the city by being reappointed to the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners on November 15th, 2011. And whereas Joe Denning will probably continue his service to the City of Bowling Green as long as he's got breath in his lungs. And whereas Joe Denning is the most beloved of all elected officials in the City of Bowling Green by virtue of his kindness and common sense, now therefore we, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, do by proclaim June 4th, 2019, as Joe Denning Day in Bowling Green, and urge every resident to take time to congratulate Joe Denning on all he's accomplished. Joe Denning. Never had a loss for words. Joe, you have the floor.
Do I get any money?
Wait, but we've got a gift certificate for you. We tried to get one for Minute Mart, but they don't sell them. So we got one for Rafterdyes.
Well, first of all, my daughters lied to me, those two right back there. I asked them why they were here, and they lied and said they were representing their sorority with schools out, you know. I certainly appreciate that part of the program. I just hope that I have played a small part in trying to make Bowling Green a better place for all of us to live, all colors. When I was elected to the school board, I said I would do the very best I could. I expelled white students, and I expelled black students. If you didn't do your job in class, you had to go somewhere else. I just hope that someday someone will say, maybe when they open this, what do you call it out? We got buried out here, time capsule down the road, and they see my picture along with others. They can say that that was my uncle, or that was my cousin, and he played a small part in making Bowling Green what it is today. I never entered anything that I've been involved in in my life because of Joe Denning being black. But I did enter those things because of Joe Denning being Joe Denning. It was something that I wanted to do. I was not pushed by any organization to take on those tasks. I had friends that, prior to becoming a Kentucky State Trooper, like one of my best friends in the world, Tommy Lovin'. Tommy was a dispatcher when I went in the academy, and after I graduated from the academy, I think Tommy's class was next or a couple after me. But I always had individuals that I was close to that shared good things with me about life and what to do. And I think that's important today for young people. You need to associate with people, good people, all walks of life, all colors, because you never know when you may have to ask one of them for a favor. I appreciate this program. Didn't know it was coming about. So does that mean I'm leaving?
I'll be gone before you are, Joe. You know that.
I appreciate what you've done, and it means a lot. You individuals that were on the screen and made those comments, I love all of you. We are close friends. But one thing I want all of you that are on that screen to remember, it only takes two more votes than mine to get rid of you.
I think he's talking to you, Kim. I'm not sure.
From the bottom of my heart. I didn't know this. As I said, and those two mean daughters of mine back there, I wondered why they were here. So I know Bruce called them sometime or another to tell them to be here, and I'm glad they are. I appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
I want to just give a special recognition. Today is the end of Ramadan, and so I want to wish all of our Muslim neighbors across the City of Bowling Green, Eid Mubarak. And I just want to invite Dennis up here if he wants to say something, if he would like. He is a representative of the City of Bowling Green Advisory Council, and so I didn't know if he would. I'm so sorry I missed the invocation. He was going to give the invocation for us, so please feel free to come up now, or...
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, citizens of Bowling Green. Just as you said, Commissioner Denning Beasley Brown. Today is Eid of Fitr, which is, marks the end of Ramadan. So Bowling Green, as you guys know, has always been a very welcoming community to very diverse populations, refugees, immigrants. And as a representative of the Bosnian-American community, but also as a Muslim-American, I just would like to extend my thanks on behalf of our community in saying thank you, guys, for always being partners in creating an interfaith community, not one that is isolated in any way. So thank you very much, and have a good meeting. I don't know.
Thank you.
I'm not familiar with the formalities. I'm sorry.
You did great.
All right, then. First item we have is approval amendments from our regular meeting on May 21st, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First item is the municipal order 2019-78.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Mike Hughes, Starmy Shaw, and Leon Volkart to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. These next four appointments or reappointments for the boards throughout our community that expire the end of this month. We're trying to get those completed. We appreciate their service and continue to serve the City of Bowling Green. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-79.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Courtland Atkinson to the City/County Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Denning. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-80.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Ryan Dearbone and Jerry Wilder to the City of Bowling Green Code Enforcement and Nuisance Board.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-81.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Marshall Gray, Jr. to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-82.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Mayor Bruce Wilkerson to the Bowling Green Warren County Drug Task Force.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Any comments or questions?
Do we need to discuss this?
Worried about me, aren't you, Joe? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-83.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-61 for the Riverview Golf Course Driving Range netting project from Net Connection LLC of Trussville, Alabama, in the amount of $396,417.
So moved.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Mizel.
If you haven't heard, we're building a driving range down at Hobson Grove Park. So we went out for bids for the netting, and we got three bids. The best bid came in at $396,417. These are steel poles. We're going with an 80-foot height on the golf course side and a 50-foot height on the tree line side. We've gotten, put some pictures in your packets late this afternoon to kind of give you an idea of what it's going to look like. But we would recommend going with this Net Connection LLC company to provide the engineering and the borings, concrete, poles, guy wires, everything, signed, sealed, and delivered to us for the driving range netting at the cost of $396,417. Mike Mitchum and Brent Belcher here, if you have any questions.
Did the other two companies take a look at the same thing that the low bid did?
They had the same design, construction designs to bid from, and we were fortunate to get this lower price versus the other two. One company's out of Florida. I think this one's out of Alabama, and the other one's out of Texas, if I remember right.
Texas must have put a lot of traveling time in his bid.
Right, that might be part of it.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2019-84.
Municipal order approving recommendation from the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau to distribute $75,435 of transient room taxes to the Mid-South Conference.
I'll move.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
CVB, Conventions Visitors Bureau, has a tourism project fund that they award projects from each year, this year they are proposing to award $75,435 to the Mid-South Conference to make some upgrades to the gym at Bowling Green High School and to the softball fields at Buchanan Park, this money comes from the 3% transient room tax that the CVB collects and Eric Ward, Commissioner for Mid-South Conference, along with Sherri Murphy, are here today to answer any questions you might have.
Comments or questions? We appreciate your investment in our community through the NAI tournament and the Mid-South Conference, we're excited that you've decided to make this your home, so looking forward to it.
Where is your corporate office located?
Here in Bowling Green, sir.
Where?
We have an office over in the small business, Western Kentucky, Yale Mall, over on National Road.
County.
Yes, sir.
Located amongst all our schools and Mr. Ward liked Bowling Green so much and how we've treated them over the tournaments over the last several years, decided to move here, so we're excited to have them in town. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2019-85.
Municipal order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated fiscal year 2020 operating budget.
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
As you know, the city issued some general obligation bonds for the trans park back in 2007, as part of that deal, we had an agreement that we would approve budget for the ITA and, and to look at their financials, their audit each year, Meredith Rosansky's here tonight to present to you the FY20 budget for the ITA and I'm going to turn it over to her.
Afternoon Commissioners, City Staff, this is your annual good news update on the Kentucky Trans Park, luckily I'm always able to come before you and give you a good news update, I mean that wouldn't be possible without the partnership that we enjoy with the city and the county in funding the trans park, it is a unique asset and you should know that it is the premier industrial park that the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development uses when they travel around the state and talk to people about if you're going to do an industrial park, this is how you do it right. So congratulations to you on that, this is the updated map, so a few changes for you since the last time we met, I know it's kind of, you won't be able to see if I point on the clicker with your screen, but if you can look behind you, right here, what used to be sort of lots 12 and 13, that area was sort of topographically challenged, if you will, there's a steep incline, so this year, as far as construction updates, we are in the process of putting in a road that goes up and serves Lot 9, the 85 acres that was purchased a couple of years ago, and we're also upgrading three building pads on the three lots that are created by doing that. The location here is Crown Verity, so that was a project that we landed last year, they make high-end grills, and then the other location this past year was Pan Austin in the trans park, and then we did have a couple of expansions, both at Alpla and at Bowling Green Metal Forming, so a lot of exciting activity over the past year in the trans park as we continue to develop the park and land new projects. On the next slide, this is our annual wage assessment, so we like to show you the increase over time, if you'll notice in 2017, that sort of big jump, 16 and 17, the ramp up, that was due to the construction in the park from, by DOT putting in the new connector road, but as you see, as that construction ramped down, the employment in the park due to the projects that we have landed over the years has ramped up, so we've sort of steadied out at a little over $2 million on the wage assessment, which is great. This is the revenue side of our equation, just a couple items to note there, again, I noticed, I mentioned the wage tax assessment, we anticipate coming in at just under 2.1 this year, so for the upcoming fiscal year, we're budgeting conservatively to sort of stay that way, we do anticipate a few other expansions, but it's going to take them time to ramp up that employment, the property tax income is from the interlocal agreement as far as the portion of the property taxes that comes back to the ITA from the people that are located within the park, interest income, you'll see, I'm projecting that to sort of dip down from the prior year just because we do have those construction projects going on, so we have drawn down some money out of our cash reserves for that, and then the lease revenue, that is the anticipated principal payment by the city and the county on the bond issue for the upcoming fiscal year. And please, if you have questions, feel free to stop me along the way. This graph shows you operating expenditure trends, that green line up at the top, back in the day before the trans park was built, there was a projection that was done on what they anticipated expenses to be over time, luckily we are nowhere near what those expenses are, we are hovering right around half a million dollars, the sort of fluctuation of the activity is mainly due to professional fees over time, so if we're working a big project like we did with Bilstein or with Constellium, and there's a lot of lawyers involved or a lot of engineering involved, then our expenses go up, but that's a good thing, that means we're landing a good project, we're working on something that's worthwhile, and then also there's a slight bump between 18 and 19, that was when we took over the maintenance of the medians from the city, so previously the city was paying for maintenance of all the medians and the right-of-ways within the park and now the ITA bears that expense. And so this is what you see on the expense side, on our management fees per our agreement, there's a 3% annual increase and so that's what you see reflected from last year to this year. On professional fees, again, that fluctuates, that's our estimate based on what projects we think we're going to work, but obviously if a big project comes in, we're going to put the net resources into it necessary to win the project, so it's actually good if that's higher than what we expect it to be. And then property maintenance, during the current fiscal year, you'll see that there was a big increase, it's at $73,000, the reason why is because we went in and sort of tore out all the plants that were in the medians, the original ones that were planted back when the park was done weren't intended for medians that weren't irrigated, so they weren't looking very good, so we've torn them all out and put in plants that don't require much water, so we want to make sure that as the premier industrial park, it stays looking nice and it's something that we're all proud of as a community when we drive out there. And then on the current year, projected the $38,000 for the cost of land sales, that is the donation of land to the city for the future fire department, so we are excited about that, as are the residents of the trans park because their insurance rates will go down once that fire station is located there. This is the good news side, on economic development for 2018, we ended the year with $182 million worth of capital investment and 578 jobs in Bowling Green and Warren County, five of those projects were in the trans park. And so far for 2019, there's actually one that is announced since I prepared this presentation and sent it to Ashley, we had Georgia Pacific come in, which was $100 million and 50 jobs, so currently for 2019, we're at $114 million and 614 jobs, and I would say stay tuned because we have a lot more to come before the end of the calendar year.
614 total jobs in the trans park?
No, 614 total new jobs announced coming to Bowling Green and Warren County, so they're not all in the trans park, those that are out there are not in the trans park, they're in the South Industrial Park.
Okay, just give me an estimate of the total number of jobs that we have in the trans park.
Currently in the trans park today, 2,700.
2,700, how many lots do we have still available?
We have about 200 to 300 acres depending on which ones we can make work, so we don't talk in terms of lots, because if a company comes and says they need 10 acres or they come and say we need 100 acres, we say we have that, so, but we are, we are looking for new property, that is always the, the quest of making sure that we have the right parcel for the next great project for our community.
So those few in the early years, the David Crockett days that said this was going to be the worst thing to happen to the city of Bowling Green, first of all, people got upset because they said we're going to move the airport up there, we haven't yet, hadn't been no discussion of that happening, and that's way down the road, but I think we, as leaders of this community, can say that the trans park has been a success.
Absolutely, it is the envy of communities around the state and when we get the question of why are we so successful, I mean, we're ranked number one in the country for economic development, Bowling Green is the fastest growing city in the state, as you know, Warren County was the number one county for inward investment and without that asset, none of that would be possible.
And I want to make sure we thank you all too, I know that all the success we're having is because of a lot of hard work behind the scenes that no one sees, and so thank everyone at the chamber for all their incredible hard work for all the successes that we're having around economic development, I know we're all just so grateful for all that you do and yeah, please pass that along to all your coworkers.
Absolutely, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank the city staff, they are incredible, when we have site visits, when we have companies come to town, oftentimes they're the ones we call on to be in the meetings with us to help back up the fact that this city is as business friendly as you can get, they will make the permitting process, the timelines, special call meetings, whatever they need to do, whatever hoops they need to jump to to make sure that the project goes on time, and it would not work without that partnership, so we are very grateful.
I'll say thank you also, Jeff and I serve on this board and it's, it's just a pleasure to go to those meetings because it's always positive, there's nothing negative that we talk about in those meetings.
You've come a long way.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been on there since 2006 and lots changed.
It's a very different.
Well, I for one like the atmosphere, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2019-86.
Municipal order authorizing insurance premium payments to the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, automobile liability, and fiscal damage property and workers' compensation for fiscal year 2020.
I'll move.
Second.
Perigin, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to go ahead and comment on these next two items, municipal order 86 and 87, 86 is for the city, 87 is for the convention center, but these are basically renewals of our, all the coverage as Ashley just mentioned with KLC, the premium for the city upcoming for FY20 is around $1,072,469, it's actually a 3.9% decrease compared to FY19, which is good, and then the renewal amount for the convention center is around $36,725, which is roughly flat compared to FY19, and so we are recommending the renewal of these policies, Dave Wisbro has prepared a detailed memo for you explaining each section, each coverage, and he is also here if you have any questions on these two, these two items.
Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2019-87.
Municipal order authorizing insurance premium payments to Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials' errors and emissions, buildings and property, and business automobile for the Convention Center Corporation for fiscal year 2020.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
Are we on 88?
You reviewed those at the same time?
Yeah, that's the one I just...
Oh, I'm sorry, did I make it again?
...talked about, that's for convention center.
Talked about both of them together, I apologize, so any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2019-88.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security grant funds related to the first responder equipment project through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of a multipurpose response and rescue vehicle for the police department in an amount up to $256,230.
I'll move.
Second. Perigin, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
Police Department would like to apply for this Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $256,230, this actually comes to the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, there is no match on this grant, which is a very good thing, the proposal would be to purchase a multipurpose response and rescue vehicle for use by the CRT team and Assistant Chief Brian Harrell is here to answer any questions on the vehicle and also Nick Cook is here to answer any questions on the grant, if you all have anything.
Comments or questions?
I have a few questions.
Brian, I think, come on up.
Hi, thank you, first of all, I'm excited that we are, have the potential to get this vehicle, I know that our CRT team faces a lot of dangers and we, is it right that we don't currently have a vehicle that protects them if they are in a particular situation? Is that correct?
That's correct, we have a vehicle that we utilize, but it's a 2008 Sprinter, it's essentially a cargo van with no ballistic protection that we utilize for transport, it's been retrofitted with some handrails and some cabinets and we've had a lot of use out of it, but we feel it's, it's time to improve that.
Yes, so that's great, I also saw that this is also very helpful for terms of rescue missions, in terms of being able to go over down limbs and roads, but then also if we have a mass shooting, that you'd be able to get, is it 20 civilians out of a dangerous situation, is that correct?
That's a fair count, we believe that we could get as many as 10 to 12 fully upfitted CRT members in this vehicle to respond and we believe that if rescue was required, we could get as many as, we'd get as many as it would hold, but we, we could get as many as 20 people inside in a rescue situation.
That's great, I wanted to just check because I know some other cities who have purchased or been granted a vehicle like this from the military, that there have been some concerns around citizens and feeling as though they might be, this vehicle could be used as a weapon against our citizens in particular situations, so I just wanted to check with you, is this going to be outfitted with any weapons or how do you, to intend to ensure that this vehicle is one that is used to protect our citizens and, and our police officers and for rescue missions and not become a weapon of, against our citizens?
Sure, this vehicle would be used for, for critical incidents, for CRT-related missions such as hostage rescue or active shooter or barricaded suspects, civilian rescue as you mentioned, or natural disasters, it is a defensive tool, it is not an offensive weapon, there will be no rifle or machine gun attached to the top or anything like that, it is a tool to safely enter and exit these situations and keep them safer than we've been able to in the past as they move to and from.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your...
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Comments or questions?
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2019-89.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security grant funds related to the first responder equipment project through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of hazardous materials equipment for the fire department in an amount up to $14,409.
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Denning, Mr. Mizel.
This is another Homeland Security Grant offered through the State Office of Homeland Security, this would be for the fire department in the amount of $14,409, they are wishing to use this money for hazmat equipment, especially suits, Deputy Chief Jim Morrow is here if you have any questions on this grant, along with Nick Cook who also worked on the, the grant side, but Chief, Deputy Chief Morrow can answer any questions about the equipment purchase.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2019-90.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a 2019 grant application to the Kentucky 911 Services Board for 911 CAD system upgrades in an amount of $1,220,446.
I'll move.
Second.
Paragon, second by Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
We've talked numerous times about the need for the replacement of our 911 system at Dispatch. We are wishing and hoping to get a grant from the Kentucky 911 Services Board. It's a competitive grant. We're applying for $1,224,46 to be applied to this project to get the new system in place. We're looking at a Motorola system that's on the state contract pricing list. And this system is, we're replacing a 22-year-old system, so it's crucial that we replace it with this new system, and this grant would go a long way towards that purchase. Nick Cook has worked on this grant, along with numerous people at the Police Department IT. It's been a good team effort, and this new system would be more compatible with what we've recently done with the phone system at Police, at Dispatch, being able to take in videos, text messages, things like that, and integrate into the system, where a dispatcher would have it all on one screen. So, recommending your approval to submit for this grant, and everybody keep your fingers crossed we get this grant.
Does Kentucky have the much money?
Nick knows.
Our year funding awards are typically in that half a million to 1 million range, but this is a very important project here locally, so we thought we would apply for what we were eligible to.
Oh, looks pretty good.
Feel it's a very competitive project.
Can you explain that this, is this a different source than the Homeland Security money, or can you explain the source of this money?
Yes, the Homeland Security funds actually originate out of federal government's, I guess, Office of Homeland Security through FEMA. This is actually through state grant funds, but they are housed at the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, but it's separate in that it's the Kentucky 911 Services Board.
So, every department in the state of Kentucky are going to be filling out applications for this same amount of money?
Application amounts range, and they're submitted from different municipalities or counties all over the state. The number of applications, I'm not sure of.
What will determine who gets the monies?
The Kentucky 911 Services Board.
Do we have people on that board?
I'm not sure. I could look into that and get back with you, though.
It'd be a good thing to know. It's a good-sized request. I hope we can get majority of it, if not all of it.
It's a goal.
Hopefully, don't ask.
Right. Can't play. Can't win if you don't play.
Anything else?
I had a couple, or just one question about the text messaging. It looks like you can also do photos and videos, so we can't currently do that, right? But we have the equipment. It's an upgrade, or?
I believe it gives us the capability. It's still dependent on our service provider, AT&amp;T, what they offer. I'm not current, I currently don't know what they are offering at this time.
But it gives us the option of being able to upgrade to that.
I think Amelia's here. She can give a little more information.
I apologize, because I've lost my voice. But I'm Amelia Bowen, the Communications Manager. This new system will give us the capability to accept this technology as it becomes available. Text messaging is becoming available, and we are talking with AT&amp;T now about that. So, we will be able to accept that video and photos. That's in the next-generation 911 plan, but that has not been pushed out to anyone yet. But with this system, we'll be ready when it is pushed out, if that answers your question.
Can I clarify? This is a new system, not an upgrade to the current system, correct?
It's a brand-new product.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions? No. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-24.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 5.58 acres from AG Agriculture and HB Highway Business to HB Highway Business located at Orange Court, presently owned by DKB Investments Incorporated, care of Ben Spickard, and with Bronson Spears as contract BND.
Second.
Nash, second by Paragon. This is a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for rezoning. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-25.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget. Ordinance adopting the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending July 30, 2020, for estimating, by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
I'll move.
Paragon, second by Denning. We had a full presentation of the budget last time. Are there any further comments or questions on this first reading?
I want to comment and say thank you again to Katie and all the people that were, that budget was amazing. It was definitely amazing. No new taxes, and lower on the expenses, and thank you.
Call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-26.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules. Ordinance admitting the classification pay schedules G for general classified, D for department head management, and U for unclassified part-time employees, and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year 2020.
I'll move.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash. This is first reading of our paid classification plan that we had explained last time. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2019-20, or excuse me, 91.
Municipal order approving amendments to the Administrative Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual for Classified Employees and rescinding separate sick leave bank and disability leave bank policies and procedures.
I'll move.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash.
We have been working on, Aaron's been working on the update to our administrative personnel policy for a number of months now. We sent that out to you for your review. I've looked over it. Gene's looked over it. We've kind of beat it with a dead, beat a dead horse, we feel like. But we posted on the click, offered it out for employees to see it, senior management, as we spent one meeting reviewing it. We think it's, we've got everything in there and cleaned up. Also, part of this is the change in the sick leave bank. We've had a disability leave bank for a number of years. It's rarely used. There's only like 10 people in it and zero activity, and we feel it's time to combine the two into one leave bank, sick leave bank. So, that's part of this change, too. But Aaron has included a brief grid, I guess you would call it, of the changes proposed in the manual. Instead of including the multi-page, large manual, we have given you a summary of the changes in this spreadsheet or grid. The first column cites the chapter. The second column is the before language, and the last column is the revised language in the manual. And Aaron is here. Be glad to answer any questions you all have. Hopefully, we've given you ample time to review the manual. I tried to get it out early to you weeks ago, and, but we'll be glad to answer any further questions you have on it.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Municipal order 2019-92.
Municipal order approving the, approving acquisition of property containing approximately 5.5 acres located on Porter Pike, adjacent to the Public Safety Training Center.
I'll move.
Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. Mizel.
Came to you some time ago with this potential opportunity for land acquisition out on Porter Pike, adjacent to our Porter Pike Fire Station, number five. It's around five and a half acres. Brent Childers has worked with the owners of the property and came to an agreement that you all gave permission on at a previous meeting to negotiate a purchase price. Brent has been in contact with the owners and has negotiated the price of $275,000 for the purchase of this property. We're bringing to you tonight for approval. The funds would come from the Fire Improvement Fund. We had $1.4 million kind of in covered for land acquisition from a prior year budget. We would use some of that money to acquire this property from the Fire Improvement Fund to purchase. So, Brent is here, can answer any questions on the negotiation or the purchase of the property.
Who?
Excuse me. Where's Brent?
Let me add this. We, this would be, if we did develop this property, it would be a police and fire, both public safety training facility for driving, training, lots of different things. We've got some tentative ideas in mind, what we would do on the property, but Brent's here to answer any more questions.
Is the property already cleared? I'm going to have to do some initial clearing. Point I'm making is, soon as the paper is signed, let's get a D8 bulldozer up there and clear whatever is there now. It sends a message. If we get it and let it set, it sends a different message. A bulldozer gets people's attention. So, as soon as we sign the paper, get a dozer up there and clear our property off and clean it up.
It's pasture right now, so there's no trees or anything to really clear off. It's a flat pasture. It's part of the Parker Miller subdivision. The Miller family's been developing this property for the last 30 or 40 years, and this is one of the last remaining parcels there along the Porter Pike corridor. They have, might still have some more on the Parker Avenue side, but it's mainly just flat bush hog pasture is what it is, and it's adjacent. So, this would be a future expansion of the Public Safety Training Center to allow that center to grow, to meet the public safety training needs in the future.
I think the lots behind it are still forested, but this lot's
This one's not. This is just bush hog pasture. Because, trust me, I love pushover stuff. I'd be right there with you on that D8 bulldozer pushing over trees. I'm all about it.
Do we still not, wouldn't need to go in there and kind of mess stuff up?
I don't think so. I don't know if the family's mowed it recently, so we might have to do that to get it cleaned up on that side. I hadn't been out there in some time whenever I was meeting with them on the acquisition.
Talk the firemen into mowing it, bush hogging it.
Yeah.
Our property needs to have some movement on it.
I understand what you're saying.
Some movement was made yesterday. We just don't need to buy it and let it set, and nothing takes place for a while.
I understand what you're saying.
Brent, can you speak to what it's zoned? Do you know?
Right now, I think it's zoned highway business or light industrial. It has a commercial classification for zoning, so we're kind of a little bit exempt from some of the zoning practices. Of course, we, if we did anything, we'd just make it public like the fire station is. This is probably the second or third property we've actually bought from the family. We've bought, I think, the original came from him, and there was another widening to our lot that came from him. Now, we're kind of behind the rest of the track. So, on the zoning side, zoning doesn't really apply to us in the same regard because of us being a governmental institution. But there is some challenges with it. There's a large electrical easement that runs diagonally across the property, so it doesn't make it as suitable for private development. But for what we would be looking for, it would still suit that. We just can't build a building in that easement, which we wouldn't be building buildings in that easement anyway, so it doesn't impact our ability to develop it. There's retention basing on it that we would have to maintain and take over, and that goes into the factors of the acquisition of it. Any other questions?
Then you sign each other.
I'll leave that up to the Fire Department. They take it over from here. I just buy the properties.
It's my understanding that we currently are able to do our own in-house training for our Fire Department recruits, but currently, we're not allowed to do that with the Police Department, correct? We have to use the Police Academy?
That's correct. I don't want to speak on behalf of the Police Department or the Fire Department, but I can tell you that the Fire Department does do their in-house trainings. They do those out there at the Porter Pike Fire Station. Police does send their, their academy is in Richmond, and we don't have the authority to do that training here locally.
So, I know there's some cities that do do their police training locally, and I was wondering, what is the process? If we're investing in this property, what's the possibility of us ever being able to do it all in-house?
I have to defer to my colleagues from the Police Department.
My goodness. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you, brother.
Yes. Short and sweet, Mayor.
Yes.
There is a process. It's a very lengthy process, a very difficult process to get your own academy approved. Not only do you have to have the approval of the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council, which is the first step, and you have to have a significant number of trained trainers in specific areas. Much like teachers are certified to teach certain things, you have to have certifications in certain areas from our staff to be able to do that. I would say that's a long-term hope and vision, but it is not something we can do quickly. It's not an overnight process. We have looked at it. We've made some connections with KLEC to inquire about that process. It also requires to have a curriculum approved by the same board, the KLEC board. And so, we're moving slowly down that path, but in conjunction with that, if we ever make the decision to do that, we do need an improved facility. And I think what we're talking about on Porter Pike is the place that we would then build a facility really suitable for that type of training, so.
So, this would make that more possible?
I think so. Yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Questions for anybody else besides Doug? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2019-93.
Municipal order authorizing property and casualty insurance brokerage services and approving the renewal of the agent fee disclosure statement with Houchn's Insurance Group Incorporated in the total amount of $60,000.
I'll move.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. Mizel.
This is a renewal for insurance brokerage services for our property and casualty coverage. We discussed that earlier. It's a flat fee of $60,000. There are no commissions included in this. It's for consulting and all kinds of different stuff listed in the, your packet under the agent fee disclosure statement. FY '20 fee is basically, is the same as last year, $60,000, and Dave Wisbrot is still here to answer any questions you have.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-27.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 26.94 acres of property located at 4031 Old Scottsville Road, presently owned by the Club at Old Stone LLC, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
I'll move. Second.
Denning, second by Paragon. Mr. Mizel.
This is annexation of the backside of Old Stone. I think there is a par three golf course going on this property, maybe some other things, but we thought it would be prudent to annex it and make it part of the Club at Old Stone. Brent Childers is here. He's been working on this, worked on this along with Ben Peterson, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions?
Is Old Stone going to run the par three?
Yes.
Any comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance.
We're going to be competing with Old Stone for par three golf course.
We will not have a par three golf course. It'll be regular non-hull.
They'll have a driving range. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-28.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 2.995 acres of property located on a portion of 830 eight thirty Cumberland Trace Road, presently owned by the Warren County School Board, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
All moved.
Question by Perrigen, second by Nash, Mr. Maslow?
This is land owned, again, by, as Ashley mentioned, by the Warren County Schools. I believe they are contemplating the movement of Cumberland Trace Elementary up the road a bit, and have consented to annexing this property on Cumberland Trace Road. And again, Brent and Ben are here to answer any questions you may have on this item.
I think this is just that little slip of land behind the current school.
I apologize.
That fell out. We're not done with the other one yet, so. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG two thousand nineteen twenty-two.
Ordinance providing for issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds. Ordinance of the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing and providing for the issuance of City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds Series two thousand nineteen for the purpose of financing the acquisition and construction of additions, expansions, and improvements to its water treatment plant, and the construction and installation of a sewer force main from the southern end of the sewer system to the Preston Avenue wastewater treatment plant.
All moved.
Perrigen, second. Second reading, Nash, I'm sorry. Did you get that second by Nash?
Mm-hmm.
It's the second reading of what we had explained to us last meeting. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending chapter seventeen Personnel Policies of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to make administrative changes to comply with existing or proposed policy amendments.
All moved.
Question by Perrigen, second by Nash, in second reading of what we had explained last time on our personnel policies in chapter seventeen. Any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Heard you, you're first on our public comments section. We have a sign-in sheet for those, and you're the, you're the only one here, yes, ma'am?
I'm Alberta Smith, and I live in Bowling Green since nineteen fifty-five. I now rent a home, and I am having tree trouble. Live on Nellums, the house next door to me, is a rental property owned by Dr. Zoo, and there's humongous limbs from cottonwood trees that are hanging over my property. I wrote him three months ago and asked him to trim the limbs off. He ignored it. So then I sent him, six weeks later, a certified letter stating that the limbs needed to be cut after I was hit in the shoulder and low back by a falling dead limb. He's continued to ignore me. I have been to an attorney, and the attorney said, "You know that no attorney in Bowling Green is going to sue a doctor." And I said, "What?" And he said, "No, not going to. We're famous for an attorney in town that did sue a doctor." Well, number one, it's not my place to do it. I've talked to my landlord, and he said, "I can't do anything about it. He's my doctor." The attorney said, "He's treating my mother, who's had a stroke. What do you do?" So what do I do? Bruce tells me, "There's nothing you can do." I don't believe that. What is the law? Where do I go from here?
Brent? I mean, I think the first thing, maybe let code enforcement look at them to see if they're dead trees, see if they follow any of our code enforcement issues involving issues like that. But I would tell you, the general rule is, I've never heard that thing, that lawyers don't sue doctors, because I know lawyers who sue doctors. But, you know, the general rule is, is that most time that's a private issue. When it's not on the right of way, it's trees that are on the boundary line between properties. Most of the time, that's a private issue between the property owners involved, unless we've got some dead limbs, dead trees that may fall into our code enforcement program. I suggest maybe have, you know, maybe some of Brent's people look at them to see if they do, you know, if we can catch any of them in that.
Are they over any wires or anything?
No. No, there's wires out there, but they're ju, well, there were, was a big limb over wires, but he sent his tenant, who's a Mexican family, up and the man, monkey climbed a tree I wouldn't have climbed, and chainsawed off a big limb that was going into the power. No. Where I'm living, there are no power lines.
That's one of my pet problems that I have ever since I've been old enough to see anything, and I'll talk with several people. I hate to see people plant trees at a property line, as an example, and it's cute for about two years, then the third year, it's a damn sycamore tree, and limbs are going everywhere. Then you ask them to cut it. Oh, no, we planted that there when little bubba was born.
Well, every spring, I have a car and a driveway, and my house is full of cotton. It blows over.
Do we have the authority, Jean, to write a letter from the city of Bowling Green to the doctor, telling him one of our citizens had come forth and expressed concern about this?
I'll go back to what I said a few minutes ago. I think our code enforcement staff needs to look at it first to make sure there's not any violations of, you know, dead limbs, dead stuff like that. You know, you also do have, and we've got another attorney in the room who can second-guess me if I'm wrong, but I think you have self-help remedies, too, you know, anything crossing your boundary line. Of course, the problem is here, this is a tenant, not the owner of the property. But, you know, if you have stuff crossing your line into your property, you've got every right to trim that from the property line up, so they've got the ability to trim. You got to make sure, you better make sure where the boundary line is before you start doing that kind of stuff, but you do have the ability to trim yourself.
Would you like for me at eighty-one to go trim them, or my landlord, who's ninety-four?
Well, I'm not nearly that age, but I don't trim stuff either. We'd have tree companies that do. I know that costs money as well, too, but still, I think the first thing is let our code enforcement staff look and think in address.
Jeff, would you have, Brent, will you get with her and set some times up and get someone to look at it for her? And if it can be trimmed, trim.
The tenant that's in the property would like for the trees to be cut down, because he has to deal with them, too.
We'll see what we need to do.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
All right, there's the last person signed up on our public comment forums, so this meeting's adjourned, except we'll go into closed session to deal with those things.
Mayor?
Don't have it, don't have him signed up.
I've never signed up once, and I've never signed one sign. Every time I've come here, I've never signed up.
Meeting is adjourned, excuses.
Okay, well, I'll be here next week for Mr. Slim Nash.